Good evening. The Caneo Valley Unified School District Board of Education Regular Board Meeting of February 4th, 2026 will please come to order pursuant to the Ralph M. Brown Act. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public and only items on the agenda will be discussed this evening. We invite you to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Board is adjourning from closed session with the following item permitted by law was considered. 1B, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2. No readout is provided for this agenda item. 1C, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section Trustee Gorbak made the motion to approve the settlement agreement for this case, seconded by trustee Powell, and the motion carried 5-0. I would like to welcome everyone to the meeting and make the following announcements. The Board values your input on the important education matters we face. Therefore, the Board is providing multiple opportunities for public participation. Public viewing is available through Internet livestream on the CVUSD website. Please note that different opportunities to provide public or written comments to the Board can be found on the main page of the Board Agenda. Members of the public wishing to submit a written comment have the option to email their comments to sfelman@caneousd.org by 3:00 p.m. today. Board members were provided with these written comments prior to this evening. Persons wishing to address the Board in person should fill out a blue speaker's card and hand it to Mrs. Feldman at the secretary's desk. If you wish to speak on a specific agenda item, please turn in your card prior to that item section on the agenda. If the school district business you wish to speak about is not on tonight's agenda, please turn in your card before the public comment section of the agenda. If you intend to donate time to another speaker, please hand in both speaker cards at the same time to Mrs. Feldman. If you wish to register your concern but not speak at the podium, please fill out a yellow public statement form and turn it in at the secretary's desk. Board members will be provided with these statements after the Board meeting. Please be advised that a recording of this meeting is being made and broadcast for our livestream audience, and recording and broadcasting may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Smoking is not permitted in this building or anywhere on district property. Copies of the agenda are available at the table in the Board lobby, and please silence all mobile phones. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
President Sylvester, I move that we approve the agenda as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, please vote. Trustee Kearns?
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg?
Yes.
Trustee Powell?
Yes.
Trustee Gorbak?
Yes.
Trustee Gill?
Yes.
I am a yes. Motion carries 5-0 with a preferential yes vote from trustee Kearns. All right, moving on to the fun stuff. We are at 2E, student recognitions. So first up is a student from Westlake High School, and I'm going to turn this over to Principal Branham.
Good evening, Board President Sylvester, Dr. McLaughlin, Board members, and Executive Cabinet and distinguished guests. Tonight, I am honored to recognize an extraordinary accomplishment by one of our Westlake High School warriors, Kevin Fee, for being named the winner of the 2025 Congressional App Challenge for California's 26th Congressional District. Kevin designed and developed an innovative mobile application called Mocio, which promotes safe driving by providing real-time analysis and personalized feedback on individual driving performance. Mocio leverages a smartphone's GPS and accelerometer data to analyze key behaviors such as velocity, acceleration, hard braking, and sharp turning to provide alerts to users of high-risk driving hotspots while offering actionable insights to help improve habits behind the wheel. The app also features elements of social engagement to encourage safe driving among peers and envisions collaboration with local governments and safety officials to enhance overall community and road safety. Kevin's work addresses a critical issue in our region and exemplifies how thoughtful technology solutions can have real-world impact. This prestigious competition was evaluated by a panel of judges from the areas of academic, software, and entrepreneurial fields. Kevin's achievement not only highlights his exceptional technical proficiency and creative problem-solving, but also reflects the supportive culture of inquiry and innovation that we strive for at Westlake High School and throughout CVUSD. On behalf of our warrior community, I extend our deepest congratulations to Kevin for this remarkable accomplishment. We are extremely proud of his vision, dedication, and the meaningful contribution he has already made to improving safety in our community, and we look forward to seeing how his talents continue to grow and help others. Congratulations, Kevin. So what you're gonna do is you're gonna walk up there and shake all their hands, okay?
Now we are gonna honor a Thousand Oaks High School student, so I will turn it over to Dr. Bergman.
Dr. McLaughlin, members of the Board, distinguished guests, I'm here tonight in order to congratulate Lila Papa Vasiliu. Lila, come on up here. Lila is a senior at Thousand Oaks High School and a student in our Center for Advanced Studies and Research. She was recently selected as the Regeneron Science Talent Search Top 300 Scholar. This marks the third consecutive year that a student enrolled in the center has earned this impressive distinction in the nation's oldest and most prestigious science and math competition for high school seniors across the country. Lila's research project is entitled "Identifying the Existence of Unconscious Gender Bias in the Perception of Political Speakers Using EEG." Each of the 300 scholars, including Lila, is awarded $2,000, and the schools they attend will be awarded also $2,000, which we will use to continue to support the research being done by our center scholars. Scholars were chosen based on their outstanding research, leadership skills, community involvement, commitment to academics, creativity in asking scientific questions, and exceptional promise as STEM leaders demonstrated through their submission of their original independent research projects, essays, and recommendations. Lila's AP Research teacher was Dr. Christa Swanson. Dr. Swanson wasn't able to make it tonight as he is away celebrating the birth of his first grandchild. Let's hear it for Christa. Yeah. Wanted me to share the following about Lila. Lila should be commended for her maturity, dedication, intelligence, and willingness to pursue a very challenging project that beautifully combined her interest in neuroscience and political communication. This honor is so well-deserved, and I couldn't agree more. Please help me congratulate Lila.
I also understand it is Lila's birthday today. Is that correct?
Yes, I just wanted to quickly read aloud Lila's abstract so that all of our audience today can understand the caliber of research that she did over the past year and a half. So I'll just start, I'll just read it word for word. Due to the recent increase of women in political positions, the topic of unconscious bias in the perception of political candidates could provide useful insight into the success of these female politicians. Political rhetoric about female politicians has been primarily exclusionary in the past, with women being categorized as either exclusively the spouses of male candidates or radical unelectable candidates. Though the number of women in political positions has increased, there is still unconscious gender bias that needs to be addressed within the perception of political speakers. Additionally, women in politics have been forced into specific types of speech patterns in order to align with both gender expectations and the expectations of a strong candidate. By using, bear with me, electronic electrono cephalo- cephalography, excuse me, also just known as EEG, to measure cognitive activity and engagement levels while participants listen to audio clips of political speakers' speech, the unconscious perception of speakers can be identified. This study identified that male candidates using assertive speech elicited greater amounts of engagement and motivation than female candidates, indicating the existence of unconscious expectations of candidates to align with gender norms, introducing bias into voter perceptions. I think this was easily one of the best projects that I've ever seen one of my center peers do, and she also utilized our EEG, which as someone who was on the receiving end of the EEG is extremely difficult to set up and almost even more difficult to read the data from, so it required a very high level of mastery. I'm proud to even be in the same room as Lila, and I think we all should be as well. Let's give it up one more time for Lila.
Thank you, trustee Kearns. All right, we are now at item 2F, which is public, which are public comments. The CVUSD Board of Education wants to hear from students, parents, employees, and our community. All individuals have the right to provide public comments during our school meetings under Government Code Section 54954.3. Comments regarding specific items listed on tonight's agenda must be made when that agenda item is called. If you wish to speak on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda, now is the time to provide your public comment. If you have not already done so and wish to speak, please hand in your blue card to Mrs. Feldman. Please note that if you have any materials to hand to the Board members, please provide those materials to Mrs. Feldman, and she will distribute them to the Board. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the Board cannot undertake any action or discussion on items not on tonight's posted agenda. However, members of the Board or its staff may briefly reply to comments or questions posed by the public. Usually, we will wait until the end of public comment period before responding. As our meetings are held in public, your comments will be heard by those who are attending or watching a broadcast. In addition, the Board encourages students to participate in civic affairs. Therefore, we hope that students are watching this meeting or in tonight's audience. Please be mindful of that, and please make your comments factual and offer them in a respectful manner. In compliance with all applicable state and federal laws, the governing board strives to respect the privacy rights of students and employees during our meetings. This includes the right for the identities of students to remain confidential. We also ask that speakers be sensitive to our employees' legal rights to privacy and confidentiality. As a reminder, those requesting to speak at this time will speak on items that are not on the Board's agenda. Please note that once we start the public comments, no more speaker cards will be accepted. Okay, we have 16 public comment cards, which in my discretion, I will reduce the speaking time to two minutes, so each of you will have two minutes to speak. All right, I'm gonna read you up in groups of three so you can kind of get ready. First up is Richard, followed by Elizabeth Allen, followed by Tanya Argen-Cressman. And again, you have two minutes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the Board, and Dr. Haken. I'm a member of our Simi Valley Chapter 310, been on their E-Board. I noticed on today's agenda, and probably was agendas past, there never was a portion of the agenda dedicated for the associations, be it teachers or be it CSEA, to allow time to speak. I guess they're allowed under public comments. Over in Simi Valley, we are allowed, the representatives of the unions are allowed unlimited time to speak on behalf of their members. So I think that should be added on to your agenda items as well. Also, I want to thank, this is my time to thank your great school district for the education of my two kids. One is here tonight, she will speak, and my son out in, you know, they both were graduated with great education, and you helped them with that, and I thank you for that, this time. And I think that it's very important that this district can keep up the same educational standards that was required for my kids about 20 years ago. So thank you very much, and please add that to the agenda item if you could. Thank you very much.
Good evening, President Sylvester, Board trustees, and Superintendent Dr. McLaughlin. My name is Elizabeth Allen, and I have worked in Caneo Valley Unified since 2014 and have been a paraeducator since October 2021. I'm also a parent of two sons who graduated from NPHS. I'm speaking not tonight as, I'm speaking tonight as both an employee and a parent. I'm here because I care about the district and the people who keep our schools running every day. Paraeducators and other classified staff play an important role in supporting students academically, behaviorally, and emotionally, especially students with higher needs. In recent years, as some county programs have closed, more students with significant behavioral needs are being served on our campuses. At the same time, we are managing heavier workloads, staff shortages, and the rising cost of living. Like many classified employees, I'm balancing work, family responsibilities, and financial reality of living in this community. Over the past few years, our responsibilities have increased, but our pay has not kept up with inflation or nearby districts. This affects staff morale and retention. When experienced staff leave because they cannot afford to stay, students lose consistency, schools lose stability, and the district loses a valuable experience that is hard to replace. I've spoken at this podium only when I felt it was important to push for long-term solutions. I'm here tonight for, oh, I'm sorry. In 2021, I worked with other parents and community members to help establish the African-American District Advisory Council, and it still exists today. I'm here for similar reasons.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
All right, Tanya Argen-Cressman.
Thank you. Okay, I'm a little nervous. Okay. Hi, I'm Tanya Orhone-Cressman, and I am an ECE Assistant Teacher for CVUSD Preschool, and I've been doing that for 15 years, 30 years, working with children total. So I'm speaking on behalf of the classified employees, my coworkers. We perform essential work that keeps this district and our community running. We meet rising expectations, adapt to increasing demands, and consistently deliver results. At the same time, wages have not kept pace with the cost of living or the value that our work creates. Fair pay is not reasonable. It is a basic standard of respect for us in classified, whose work makes success possible. We are calling for raise increases that reflect our contributions and uphold our economic dignity. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next three are Tyler Conti, I'm sorry if I'm messing up names, Sue Scott, and then Caroline
Hi, guys, Board. Thank you, guys, very much for letting me speak today. First, I just want to start with, I'm a very technology-limited or almost technology-free household. We try not to bring a lot of that into the house and keep kids playing outside, doing all that stuff. I noticed this year, and my wife noticed this year, when signing up to get our kids into Caneo Academy where they've been attending and absolutely love school, that there's no option to opt out of technology use in the school. It's actually a required box on the form. So when submitting in for that, I feel that it's not prudent to have my children opt into something that I don't feel is something that they should be used. I understand there's technology places in school and that they can get greater education through many different forms of technology, but things like screen limitation, I think, is extremely important for the young youth of today. I think they need hands-on learning. I think they need real books that they can physically hold. I think they need pencils to write with. I don't think that a computer and a laptop is the right way to teach five, six, seven-year-old children in education. Frankly, I think that teachers are an extreme important part of that education system and that face-to-face communication, problem-solving, getting in groups, getting together to do those things is extremely important, and I just hope that in this next year, when we do this again, that there will be an option to opt out of technology use within the school. Thank you.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Sue Scott, and I'm writing, I'm reading from a letter here by Margaret Jarom, and these are her words, but I totally agree with everything that she's written down here. All the classified employees need to be recognized in the hard work that they do every day to help the schools function. We help make schools function so that the teachers can teach in a peaceful, clean, and safe environment. The preschool program is also an essential piece to the educational system because we help prepare the children so that they are ready for extended learning. We work hard, just like the certified teachers, and with inflation, we feel justified with asking for a pay raise. We constantly feel like we are trying to keep up with the rising costs of goods and services, but we are never caught up. And that was from Margaret, so thank you very much.
Okay, good evening. My name is Carolyn Bernardino. I am the mother of four children and have lived in Caneo Valley for over 18 years. All my kids began kindergarten here, and while one's in college, I still have a high schooler, a middle schooler, and an elementary school student. All were enrolled at CVUSD during COVID, when online learning became a permanent fixture in their education. I myself am a professional educator, having worked as a secondary social studies teacher, a school counselor, and a K-12 substitute teacher for over 27 years. I've worked at some of the poorest and wealthiest schools in Los Angeles and Ventura Counties in multiple capacities. For that reason, I feel I have valuable perspective regarding the negative effects of online learning before high school, which I believe is having a serious toll on students' cognitive abilities when used outside of the classroom. I'm sharing my experience of my family's and my family's experience tonight, a little bit. With my eldest two children, you know, they were forced to sit, write, and think. They used consumable texts and composition books to take notes and thereby produced college-level work in high school. My current high schooler, I recognized his striking drop in quality because he was in middle school when COVID began. Today, I have a middle schooler also diagnosed with ADHD, and since the beginning, found it difficult, found online learning difficult. The medium for most subjects is his laptop, where he spends hours arranging text boxes for Q&amp;A discussion slides, digitally clicking on single-answer social studies reading checks, and drawing in social studies to represent understanding. This is an example, this is an example of laptop screen when it's zoomed in. It's very small. It is, it is this big. It is this big. Okay. It takes considerably more time for just his computer and answering responses and actually coming up with the answers, and the reading comprehension is affected. Obviously, I have a lot more to say, but I'm just stopping there. Thank you.
Okay, our next three are Lauren Zazidil, Emily Edwards, and Ainsley Robino, Robiho. Again, you each have two minutes to speak.
Hi, my name's Lauren Zazidil. Hello, Board members. I am a parent of three kiddos in the district. I'm a teacher at Westlake High School, and I'm here to talk about the technology stuff too with a lot of these other parents. Particularly, I'm hoping to urge you guys to say, change some of the policies, like the one-to-one device policy with regards to elementary school kids and the cellphone policy in high schools. My experience as a teacher and definitely my experience as a mother has convinced me that we could do more as an institution to combat the negatives that we're seeing coming from these, from these technologies. First, at the elementary school level, I really urge a reduced device dependence and an end to one-to-one for K through 5. I mean, you guys know young kids are learning to read and focus and regulate their emotions and interact socially. We, as parents, are so overwhelmed by the challenge of promoting active creative play and deep reading and just healthy boredom at home rather than giving in and giving access to these enticing technologies to our kids that all of these experts are now saying this is really hurtful for them. And I just desperately want some peace of mind that the schools have the same philosophy that I have, which is that screens really need to be rare in the lives of kids that age. It's also an issue of exposure. I mean, just so you guys know, my seven-year-old came home a couple months ago and asked me what the N-word was. He told me he heard it in a video that a fifth grader was watching while waiting to walk into class, and this is not something, this kind of story is not super uncommon. And so I feel like some of the filters don't work perfectly either. At the high school level, I want to emphasize something many of us in the classroom know, which is that more tech does not equal more learning. It's actually quite the opposite. I know that laptops have a place. I use them at times. I really recommend that we use them, like with carts, and that students don't have them. I also think that cellphones need to be out of the high school entirely. That's possible, hopefully. Thank you.
Hi, Board members. Emily Edwards here. I'm a mother of three in our district elementary schools. I'm a music educator in our community, and last summer, my son shared my phone number with a few camp friends so they could stay in touch, and he doesn't have his own device. But within 24 hours, what started as one small group text had turned into five large ones full of kids he and I didn't even know, and by the end of that day, I had 400 unread text messages that were none of my own personal ones. And by the end of that same 24-hour period, these group chats had devolved into bullying other kids in that group. So I immediately removed my son, or myself, from all of these group chats, and he was only 10 years old at the time. But what struck me most was that this wasn't dramatic or But what struck me most was that this wasn't dramatic or rare. It was fast, it was subtle, it was deeply unsettling. And elementary school children are communicating every day this way. I know that my fifth and second graders sometimes have free time at school, and most students choose to spend it on their Chromebooks. And while many sites are blocked, as Ms. Zazdil said, last year at our elementary school, which is a different one than hers, a fifth grader managed to pull up a video containing racial slurs and show it to another classmate of that race. But the issue isn't only harmful content. It's what happens when screens replace face-to-face interaction and unstructured creative play. Children lose chances to build empathy, practice problem solving, experience the joyful, messy ways humans learn with and from one another. Technology has benefits, but we need to be careful that it's not disrupting development, attention span, creativity, and emotional resilience. I want to say that I love all of my kids' teachers. They are angels, and this is not a critique on them, but a way I want to support them because their job feels impossible in reaching a generation who are disconnected and unmotivated. Studies show there is a sensitive and crucial age for cultural and social learning that spans roughly from ages nine to 15, these years when identity and self-worth take root in especially lasting ways. And I know for parents, their pressure to conform feels overwhelming, and families feel stuck, afraid their child will be isolated if they don't give in. But this is why schools matter so much in the conversation. And if we limit personal devices in the places where children feel the greatest social pressure, our district can relieve that burden. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, esteemed board members, district leadership, and superintendent. Hello, my name is Ainsley Robino, and I am the First Vice President of CSEA's local chapter, as well as a proud K-12 graduate of CVUSD. As classified staff duly elected representative, I'm coming forward with their concerns. There have been numerous concerns over work from multiple sites due to management's distribution of employees assigned tasks in their respective departments. With the district using a method of attrition to not fill jobs when people resign, employees are concerned they have larger workload than ever before, and they have to do it in the same number of hours. Duties that used to be or should be spread amongst multiple employees are now being relegated to one employee. Thus, when that one employee takes a holiday or is out sick, as all employees are entitled to do at some point during the fiscal year, the services they provide come to a standstill and packing district processes. These services are essential for ensuring the students' lives are kept to the same level of care upon the CVUSD prides itself. For example, one heating and ventilation mechanic position is lifted for layoff. This would cause the remaining two HVAC mechanics, who are responsible for the entire district, a concerningly increased workload, especially for the oncoming summer months, which will impact students. Another concern that CSEA has is that more money was allocated to deputy superintendent. Per the contract recently approved by the Board of Education, the deputy superintendent's salary has increased by three days, the rate of his current six-figure salary. This combined of other salary increases raises annual salary by nearly $40,000 since the 2022 contract. Meanwhile, classified staff is being told the district cannot afford to give a raise for this or even last school year. The decision to increase funds to district leadership while making decisions to lay off classified employees while the district is predicting a shortfall is concerning. Nearby districts have recently closed negotiations. For instance, Simi Valley, no layoffs are made, and Simi's Education approved a 2% ongoing raise. CSEA calls upon the board to approve a similar financial incentive to our hard-working classified employees. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate and enjoyed the speed talking. So I am sorry I've cut the time down, but you all do a good job. All right, our next three, Julie Fruman, followed by Lana Clark, followed by Michelle Tucker.
So I'm going to wrap this petition that I wrote with a bunch of other CVUSD parents. It's the Tin Tech Commandments. It's the Tin Tech Commandments. Yeah, this is happening. Number one, it's time to rethink device policy. Who likes one-to-one? Not them or me. Number two, homework should not be on devices. It leaves our families in a state of crisis. Block YouTube and video games. Reducing distraction is what grows their brains. Let's talk it out. Wear our grown-up boots. Most disputes die and no one shoots. Number four, with AI, slow it down. Unknown impacts still abound. Before AI enters a child's day, parents have to opt in. There's no other way. With all ed tech, we plead, the right to opt out is what we need. Number six, student data isn't yours to rent. So for each data-selling website, parents need to consent. Time on screens in class, it's time for schools to be transparent at last. And increase dialogue about how we can make it more analog. Other districts are doing it. Other countries are doing it. These decisions are being made without giving parents a voice. With all this lack of regulation and complexity, we really should have a choice. Number nine, help teachers with low-tech plans. Time and resources and helping hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 paces. Educate. Finally, please provide education for families and students about screen addiction. Partner with us in this work. Respectfully, over 260 signatures to this petition online. HealthierTech.org if you want to sign it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fruman. Last seen performing at a DAC meeting.
Good evening. I'm sad to say I do not have a performance that can follow. Julie, my name is Lana Clark. I'm the Executive Director of Canejo Schools Foundation, and just wanted to provide an opportunity to share the love. Right now, Canejo Schools Foundation is conducting a campaign to support the over 600 students in our district who are classified as McKinney-Vento. This means that they are either unhoused or living in unsuitable housing conditions. 600 students. 151 of those students this year are getting ready to either graduate or move up a grade from fifth grade and eighth grade, promoting and culminating. Canejo Schools Foundation would like to celebrate with these students who've overcome so much by providing the fifth graders a yearbook, by providing our eighth-grade friends a yearbook and an opportunity to go on their class trip. And for our seniors, we go all out. This is expensive, but it's really worth it. This means prom and picnic and everything that these students have worked so hard for against all odds. So we invite you to help us share the love as we get ready to celebrate Valentine's Day, celebrate these students who have overcome so many obstacles, and help them celebrate as they cross a milestone finish line. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, okay. Good evening, everyone. I am reading this on behalf of a fellow classified member who was not able to. "The cost of living keeps rising while wages lag behind, yet we rely on trustworthy, dedicated childcare teachers who go far beyond what's asked of them, hold families together, and are nearly impossible to replace. We're paid the bare minimum for one of the most important jobs, asked to carry growing costs, growing responsibility, and the care of our children without pay that reflects our value. Thank you for your time." Back.
Thank you. Our next three are Mike Bunve. Mike Bundy. Thank you. Followed by Erin Carl, followed by Melissa Piet.
I'll just start speaking.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay, my name is Mike Bundy. I am the maintenance electrician and the current CSEA Chapter President here at Canejo Valley Unified. I just wanted to bring up two facts to the Board of Education. They're telling us we're going to have less workers and more square footage. You haven't heard, the district purchased two additional buildings in the last year that are being maintained by our maintenance and operations staff on the inside and being taken care of on the outside by our grounds crews. The cost of these buildings had to be in the millions of dollars. We even hired a professional leasing company to lease them out. No, these buildings have nothing to do with education or educating our children. Moving forward, the next point I want to make is layoffs. We meet with the district once a month to discuss what is going on between what's happening in the district and what's going on with the workers. We were told for months that they were going to reduce our custodial staff by 10 spots. That was the message that we keep getting told every single month. Just custodial. On January 12th, the district informed us that there might be additional layoffs. January 29th, the list of layoffs was presented to us with additional staff members given. Now, less than a week later, the proposed layoffs are going in front of the board without any input from the classified staff or direction on how to manage the increased workloads. Leaving some job classes with only one worker. What happens when that employee takes their week vacation? What happens if that employee gets sick for a couple days? When they return to work, how are they going to catch up? Are they just going to burn out? We need to take care of our workers and keep them all. Thank you.
Go on.
Good evening, board members. My name is Erin Carlay. I'm a father of a CVUSD second grader, and this is my ninth year as a special education teacher. I spent the vast majority of my career teaching in high school full-inclusion classrooms. For reference, full-inclusion classrooms are general education classes that include a small number of students with learning disabilities, supported by a special education teacher within the general education setting. I was the second teacher in these classrooms. I want to start by saying this. Teaching has always been hard. Keeping students focused, motivated, and engaged has never been easy. I'm not here to suggest there was some golden age where students were perfectly attentive and learning was effortless. But something has fundamentally changed. At some point, technology in the classroom stopped being a tool and became a crutch. Instead of thinking, it began replacing it. Students are no longer expected to persist through difficulty because the computer will do the thinking for them. In my classrooms, I saw students who struggled to read at grade level, never more than 10 minutes at a time. Handwriting skills were dramatically below age level and often illegible. Math fluency was usually two or three grade levels below California State standards, with students showing a poor understanding of the fundamentals. These challenges were not isolated to special education students. They were just as prevalent in general education students, and I often found myself providing equal or greater levels of support to them. What teachers are seeing in the classroom every day is not anecdotal. It's supported by research. We know that students comprehend less when reading on screens compared to paper. We know that writing by hand improves retention and understanding. We know that students perform worse on online assessments than on paper ones. And we know that screens, even when not actively being used, reduce focus and learning. This is not a call for innovation or experimentation. It's a call for course correction. We've moved too far towards a constant computer use in the classroom, and it's become at the expense of thinking, persistence, and skill development. I urge the board to reconsider the routine use of computers during instruction and return to learning environments centered on reading physical text, writing by hand, and developing foundational skills without digital shortcuts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Melissa Piet. I am a paraeducator, and I am actually reading something on behalf of another CSEA employee. Dear members of the board, we, the educators and staff of Canejo Valley Unified School District, are writing to formally request a cost-of-living adjustment to be implemented for the upcoming budget cycle. We remain deeply committed to the success and well-being of our students. However, the current economic climate and operational strain have reached a critical tipping point. Our request is based on the primary factor that is currently impacting the quality of education in our district. Economic reality. While our dedication to our students remains unchanged, our purchasing power has diminished. With the rise of costs of housing utilities and healthcare, current salary scales no longer reflect the cost of living in Thousand Oaks, which has risen as much as 3% in the last year. To maintain the high standard of excellence CVUSD is known for, we must prioritize retention. A meaningful cost-of-living raise is not just a bonus for hard work. It is an essential investment in the stability of our schools. Competitive pay is the most effective tool we have to fill our current vacancies and reduce the exhaustion of our existing team. A school is only as strong as the people who show up every day to lead the classrooms. We want to continue showing up for our students, but we need the district to show up for us. We respectfully ask the board to, one, conduct an immediate review of the budget to prioritize a salary increase for classified staff; two, provide a transparent timeline for when these adjustments will be discussed in a public session. We invite members of the board to visit our classrooms and speak with us directly to see the incredible work being done despite these hurdles. We look forward to your response and to working together to keep CVUSD a premier place to learn and work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one more public comment. It is Brigitte. Hello, Brigitte.
Hi.
Let's see.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here on behalf of my daughter, who is 10 years old, and attends the Westlake Hills Elementary. So I was driving her to school, and then she told me in the car that she would like to move to Australia. And I'm like, why would you, why would that? And she's like, because there, they actually protected children from technology. It's banned until like social media, like the age of 16. And there's no phones. So I was shocked by that. And I hear, that's why I'm here. Because I want you and all the people in here, I want you to do something, all right? I don't want to stand here like the next couple of years and my daughter's out of school, and she has been sitting in front of this Chromebook, doing click, click, click homework every day. I want her to see faces. I want her to have the ability to talk to somebody. Those technologies are not helping. She's in elementary school. I am forced now to find a school that returns to pen and paper, okay? Can we return to pen and paper? Can they write down things? I ask you, you are in charge. You're the custodian of our children. You have the power to do something. I can bring a list of things where I can show you what it does to their mind. But you know that. You have read the articles, you have seen the science behind it. We cannot put porns from like Silicon Valley's. They have not the interest of the children's mind. We know that, too. We have seen what social media has done to this country as well. We have to protect our children. That's why I'm here, and that's why I'm asking you, please, do something.
Okay, thank you. I just want to reply briefly to the last comment and reiterate what I said at the last board meeting, which is we're hearing the concerns about technology. We have a technology committee in place. We've just added two trustees to that committee. They're meeting, I think, any day now, and they will be looking at the technology policy as well as crafting an AI policy. So we're hearing what you're saying. It will come before the board in the next couple of months for discussion and ultimately for execution.
I'll just address a little bit on the discussion of salary negotiations. Obviously, we are in the midst of good-faith negotiations with CSEA. Hopefully, sooner than later, we will be able to get to an agreement that satisfies both needs on both sides of the table. Until that happens, we will continue to problem-solve and work with our negotiating team to hopefully get through some negotiations in a timely manner. So appreciate it. Appreciate everyone being here tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McLaughlin, for adding that. All right, section three, which is action items, we have nothing on that agenda tonight. So we're going to move to section four, which is our consent agenda. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Trustee Powell.
President Soster, I move that we approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay. Seeing none, please vote. Trustee Kearns.
Yes.
Trustee Powell.
Yes.
Trustee Gorbak.
Yes.
Trustee Gill.
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg.
Yes.
I am a yes. Motion carries 5-0 with a preferential yes vote from Trustee Kearns. All right, we are now on section five, which is information and discussion agenda items. I'm going to preface this entire section by saying nothing in here are we voting on tonight. That's why it's under the section of information and discussion items. So there is no vote on any of these items listed under section five. With that, our first item is deletion of board policy and administrative regulation 5145.13, response to immigration enforcement. I'm going to see if Mr. Lou has any comments on this.
Yeah, I do have some comments. I'll speak actually generally before I get into the specifics of this particular deletion. Really just to say that our school district, as well as other public school districts in California, we receive updates from the California School Boards Association on updated policy recommendations based off new California law. As we all know, the state legislator and the governor, they sign many bills and enact many changes into education code. And subsequently, that provides us updates through CSBA gamut language. Well, about two weeks ago, we received a pretty significant update from CSBA, which really outlines, really, I think, the next six changes and proposals to the Board of Education for board policy and administrative regulation. And that's specific to a number of state laws that were passed as it relates to student rights and immigration enforcement at schools. This law does actually require that we, as well as all other public school districts, submit to the California Department of Education by March 1st of 2026, a copy of all of our updated policies and procedures as it relates to some of these new laws that I'll be talking about in the meeting. And so you can see that this does certainly affect the response to immigration enforcement. I'll also be talking about access to district records, safety plans, student records, and release of directory information. It would be our intent to have the Board consider these updates at the next meeting, potentially approve them, so we can provide the proof and evidence of these updated policies to the California Department of Education. And so that's kind of just the overall primer. For the response to immigration enforcement board policy and AR, CSBA gamut has a suggestion of deleting our current board policy and AR and replacing it with the proposed, which is the next item in 5B.
All right. So we can discuss this deletion of an item, but it seems like we probably should move on to what we're going to put in place instead. So take it away.
Great. So for item 5B, which is discussion of the new, which is the total replacement of board policy and AR on response to immigration enforcement. This does reflect new law. The board policy expands prior guidance on responding to immigration enforcement, incorporating new legal requirements set forth by new law. It aligns our district practices to the California Attorney General's model policies. Additionally, it provides us with additional actions, reporting and notification requirements, protections against discrimination, and again, all for the sake of being compliant with current state law. The administrative regulation for the response to immigration enforcement outlines our procedural responses in the case in which immigration enforcement officials request access to information regarding students or families, as well as request access to speak to students. To be clear, and just for the Board and the public's information, immigration enforcement officers have not been present at any of our CVUSD schools and have not come to seek out information about any of our employees, students, or families as of today. I do also just want to highlight that our school district has taken a number of actions that are outlined in this proposed policy, as well as in the prior, which is providing the Attorney General's Know Your Educational Rights through a variety of ways, providing information and training related to the rights pertained in the California Attorney General's guidance to the District English Language Advisory Council, Cluster English Language Advisory Committees, as well as many outreach events that we host in the school district and amongst the community with many of our community partners. We have also set forth a number of procedures outlined in the proposed policy, as well as in the prior, and provided training as to what procedures should be in place if, in fact, an immigration enforcement officer comes to try to speak with a student or a staff member or seeks information at a school.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments on this? Trustee Gorbak.
Mr. Lou, just to summarize, what is the difference between the new policy that we're adding and the one that we're striking out?
There are actually very little. I mean, the proposed new policies, I would say, like are organized in probably a more comprehensible way. When we went through the federal progress monitoring effort in 2022, that actually did update pretty much all of our prior policies to what is required. But the language is not exact. And so CSBA's gamut recommendations are, again, those that we'll see consistently throughout the state. And again, I would just say probably better organize the information.
Trustee Powell?
So the language of this new policy, it all comes from gamut?
That's correct. There may be a place where there's a reference to school police, and the CVUSD language that aligns to our practice would be not school police, but school resource officer. That would be the only change.
So we felt that the way that this was laid out by gamut really matched what we were doing or have been doing?
Yes.
Okay. One specific question was, I know in several places it talks about needing a valid judicial subpoena. Is that something people will know that it's valid? I know when I've read about requirements, it also specifically says signed by a judge. I just wasn't sure if most employees would know what valid means.
Yeah. So as part of the policy and as well as part of our training that we provided to office managers, principals, like front office staff that potentially would be looking at something like this, verifying a valid judicial subpoena would really rest upon the communication of that staff to our district staff. Our policy and our procedures note that we would then be working with legal counsel to verify, in fact, the authenticity of those documents. So the folks at our schools know that that is not certainly their decision to make, but that we would provide the legal guidance and support as needed.
Thank you. So will this necessitate any additional training? Or we pretty much are doing what is spelled out here?
We are doing what is spelled out here. There are a couple additions related to publishing the education Know Your Rights. This is a document that we have provided in the past, that we've actually included in our annual updates in the past. Part one of the requirements is that we do post it, and that is actually now posted currently as part of the, within the annual notifications and information page on our website. So we have already kind of made some of those adjustments.
Okay, great. Any other comments on this particular policy and administrative regulation? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to 5C, which is about access to district records. Mr. Lou?
Again, under just the same umbrella that I've described, updates to this board policy and administrative regulation are from CSBA gamut, and they align with new California laws that I mentioned. You can note in the policy what the CSBA gamut recommendations are. Those should be in black and bold. I should just highlight in the administrative regulation, there's updated reference now to the proposed response immigration enforcement board policy, which is to make sure that, like, in the case of access to district records, that we would be following the information noted in the referenced response to immigration enforcement policy. They are all, in a lot of ways, connected policies. And so that sort of seems to be, I don't want to call it a web, but just the connection amongst them.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. Now we're on to 5D, which is 0450 Comprehensive Safety Plan.
We actually brought forward the comprehensive safety plan updates probably in the last few months, but again, had recently got updates based off new California law. As it relates to sort of the discussion today, a new requirement of the comprehensive safety plan is that no later than March 1st of this year, our safety plans will be updated to include procedures specifically designed to notify parents and guardians and staff when the school confirms the presence of immigration enforcement on a school site. So we will work to make sure that we meet that deadline.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments here? Okay, seeing none. Let's see. Now we're on 5E, which is 5125 Student Records.
Also updates based off new California law. This updates our language to reflect the model policy language developed by the California Attorney General again. I guess I'll specify that we, in our annual parent guarding notifications, will include moving forward a statement that student citizen status, immigration status, place of birth will only be released in accordance with the response to immigration enforcement updates.
Okay, thank you. Again, questions or comments on this particular policy? All right. Finally, and Mr. Lou, you're off the hook. 5F, Discussion of Board Policy and AR Regulation 5125.1, Release of Directory Information.
I was prepared to wrap the 5F, but I will not because that was very impressive. So again, same line of thinking. Updates to new California law for the board policy and the administrative regulation, just to fall closer in line with the model policy language developed by the California Attorney General.
Excellent, thank you. And these will come up at the next Board meeting? So we vote on it, so we can submit it in the timeframe required by the state? Those that are affected?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions on that last one? Trustee Kearns?
Another question, but before we move on from updating our immigration policy, I just want to say for any students or concerned community members that are in the audience today, virtually in person, I think it's fair to say that students are very, very scared and very, very frustrated. Students from all walks of life, no matter where you came from or where you're going, students are very scared on all sides of the political spectrum. This was very well characterized to me the other day when there was a few police cars in the Thousand Oaks High School parking lot, and nothing was visibly happening. The police cars were just there. And a few of my peers, actually quite a few of my peers, came up to me and asked me what was going on with fear. They were concerned. This was, I think, about 48 hours after Alex Preddy was shot by an ICE agent in Minnesota. So their fear, I would say, was very valid and something that I did not take lightly. At the end of the day, I think the only thing that was going on, they were just doing some training. But what really spoke to me about that situation was just how afraid everyone is, and for good reason. It's very upsetting. Watching those videos, I had a very, like, physical reaction to how horrible people were being treated in this country. It's horrible. And so that is why I'm very happy that we are updating our immigration policy and following guidance from the state of California and following the law and being very responsible followers of the law, unlike some other law enforcement agencies that I might name, and really following our mission in educating students. We are supposed to educate students. Students should not be afraid to go on campus for any reason, regardless of what's going on. And that is our job, to make sure that they feel safe on campus. So I commend this district for their attention to this issue. I commend Mr. Lou for being diligent in updating policy. And I thank the entire administration team, especially Ms. Harrison, for staying on top of this and making sure that every single student feels safe in this district, because no student deserves that they feel like they're going to be shot for speaking their voice, or shot for the color of their skin, or shot for any reason without any repercussion or justification of that law enforcement action. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Kearns. All right. Now we are moving on to item 5G, which is a discussion of grant-funded mental health resolutions. I believe we're going to put that on the screen. Is that correct? And we have a public speaker. So since it's one public speaker, that person will get three minutes. It's Sam Muscarilla.
And the school district. And at first glance, these resolutions are presented as fiscally responsible responses to grant disruptions in long-term budget planning. But when you really look at them educationally, operationally, and financially, eliminating all of these positions is quite short-sighted. Grant disruption should not lead to, should lead to careful program review and strategic adjustments, not the elimination of positions. Federal funding is often unstable, but that alone does not justify dismantling an entire department and programs that students and schools rely on. Your projected savings assume that these services simply disappear without consequences. That's not how schools work. In reality, the work doesn't go away. It gets pushed off onto staff who are already stretched thin. Overtime costs increase. Districts rely more on subs, contractors, on crisis response services. Site administrators will end up spending far more time managing behavioral and mental health crises instead of focusing on instruction and school leadership. This is not true efficiency. This is a cost shift. Planning for future fiscal stability is important, but it should not come at the expense of the students we are serving right now. Balancing a budget for 2028 or 2029 by removing essential support for students now and next year is neither equitable nor responsible. The same is for the classified positions. These roles, eliminating them creates inefficiency. It doesn't streamline systems. It destabilizes them. When these positions are cut, operations suffer, burnout increases, and student support decreases. This directly contradicts with the district's stated goals around student success, wellness, and retention. So in conclusion, this is not a thoughtful recalibration. It's a blunt instrument. These actions may balance a budget on paper, but they create deeper, more costly problems in practice. So I urge the Board to slow this process down and consider solutions that protect students, staff, and the long-term health of the district.
Thank you very much for your comments. So this item is specific to the grant-funded mental health resolution. As you all probably know, the federal government had awarded us a grant over a period of a certain time, and they decided to stop paying us the grant. So this piece right here, this resolution, is related to that. Dr. McLaughlin?
And I'm sure Mr. Lou will get into this as he briefly touches base on the resolution. But this grant was scheduled to end next year. So we knew the moment we took this grant, it was $11 million grant. We knew the dollars were going to go away. We knew that there was going to be a reduction in force when that happened. We made that very clear at the time that we accepted the dollars. We put our plan in place, and we knew it was great for kids while we had it. And it's really working through the process of what we can put in place once the grant leaves. Ultimately, the federal government came in and said a year early, we will be counseling, giving the district any more money regarding this grant, which leads us to having this conversation now, at this point in time, a year earlier than anticipated. This has nothing to do with us trying to balance a budget. This has nothing to do with anything that deals with general funds and trying to save jobs and not save jobs. This is all an outcome of a decision made at the federal level that as a district, we have no control over, and that we have to make the unfortunate, well, the Board has to make the unfortunate decision at some point in time that we have to reduce these dollars. So, Mr. Lou?
So just to give some of the context, which we've described in sort of like the story within this, both of the resolutions related to the discussion of grant-funded mental health positions. I do just want to note that, you know, we did receive the notice of... I do just want to note that, you know, we did receive the notice of the discontinuation of those grant dollars, gosh, sometime in fall of the school year, and very quickly worked hard to find every avenue that we could to try to retain those dollars. And so we participated with many other local educational agencies to seek an injunction, like through the federal courts. We were successful, my understanding, in achieving both a temporary as well as a permanent injunction, which would therefore grant us those funds. However, it has become disappointingly very clear that even with that federal ruling, the Department of Education continues to not provide us those funds, and continues to, what seems to be like, litigate the issue ongoing in the courts. So while there is certainly a lot of uncertainty surrounding this grant and its impacts on the important mental health services that we provide our students, we did want to be really clear about a couple of things. You know, first, and just to emphasize, that the discontinuation of these significant grant fund dollars has not been caused by any action or inaction or noncompliance that any of our staff have taken. In fact, this has just been the result of a federal-level decision that has impacted us, our staff, and our students. The goal of our mental health department has always been sustainability, and so we continue to put forth every effort to participate in the state's Children and Youth Behavioral Initiative, or CYBHI, which allows us to appropriately bill private insurance for mental health services with the full consent of and at no cost to parents and guardians. We are working to provide additional information to our staff, and via our district and school webpages, to families to learn more about CYBHI. We do need the community and parents and guardians to support us in this effort, really as a partnership, I think, to fully realize what we hope will be sustaining mental health through this statewide initiative. Finally, I just want to say that if the litigation surrounding this discontinuation in the federal courts continues, or if there is some final ruling that states permanently that we won't receive any more of these federal dollars, we are going to be in a position to provide some, not all, but importantly, some, mental health services moving forward and looking into next year, based off of limited one-time grant dollars from the state. We want to give recognition to Dr. Chamberlain and her team to continuing to apply for and seek out any and all opportunities for grant funding. The dollars that we've been able to apply for and receive are not a one-to-one replacement of the significant federal dollars that we once received, but they are important. And so there's certainly, this is not a dismantling of that department or services. However, moving forward, Dr. Chamberlain and I and her team will have to carefully consider what those types of services will look like, using both historical data and based off of the current needs, and of course, we will continue to apply for funding and seek long-term sustainability.
Thank you, Mr. Liu. Before I open up to the board, Mrs. Ashmore, from an HR perspective, do you have any comments?
So I would just offer that even with these specially funded positions, we need to first look at whether or not any individuals in these positions held prior positions, and then we would apply the collective bargaining language in Article 17, the Personnel Commission rules and Education Code for how we go through a process of examining any displacement rights, and it's commonly referred to as bumping. So we would, we would look at that for each position to determine what displacement rights, if any, an employee has.
Okay, thank you for helping us understand the process a little better. Okay, now I'm opening up for questions or comments from my fellow trustees on this grant-funded mental health. This is a tough one for the board. We are all tremendous proponents of the work that our mental health department has done, and, you know, basically, we're heartbroken that this happened. We thought we'd have at least another year, and that was, that was taken away. So this is not something that the board is pushing or behind. This is something that we are unfortunately having to grapple with. Trustee Goldberg.
Mr. Liu, can you review, because I know we've discussed it before, the procedures that you, all administration, have taken as far as appealing the suspension of grants?
Yes, so when we received the initial discontinuation of the funds for these particular grant dollars, there was an opportunity afforded to, and I should just back up real quick. My understanding is that it wasn't just our school district that was subject to this discontinuation. I should state that by and large, all school districts that were receiving these particular dollars out of the school-based mental health services grant program had those funds discontinued. So we, and Dr. Chamberlain and her team, worked really hard to submit that initial appeal to the Department of Education. That appeal unfortunately was denied. At sort of the same time that that was happening, we were contacted by or directly reached out to a, I'm trying to make sure, so out of the state of Washington, the Assistant Attorney General, who Dr. Chamberlain emails pretty regularly, we joined suit with them into the, as I referenced, the legal effort to seek an injunction, which again, we did receive both a permanent, temporary, and then a permanent injunction, like right before Christmas. It's just that, that injunction then required the Department of Education to essentially provide us with an official notice that the grant was back up and running, and we and no other school district that participated, and we think won in that particular case, like, received any of that notice. Subsequent to that, we received a one-month extension of the grant for $0. And then I think just yesterday, received, or two days ago, Dr. Chamberlain received information from that Assistant Attorney General, essentially outlining that this would continue to like, to be litigated in court. To our knowledge, there was no other, I think, we took every opportunity and worked really closely with the individuals to like, provide any declarations and information. Dr. Chamberlain, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, the extension for one month was funded at $219,000.
So about every three weeks, we think we get a victory, and then, I will say, the federal government's the one who comes in and appeals this, and then sets us back another three weeks, and then we think we get another win for three weeks, and then it goes back to another appeal at the federal level. So we will continue to battle this as much as we can and as far as we can. Eventually, a decision's going to have to be made to what happens with, with these dollars and how, if it is going to be received by a district or not. But we have been putting in every effort to try to get these dollars.
Who do we, oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
Who do we appeal to, as long as there's no Department, federal Department of Education?
Well, we're not really the ones who are appealing. We're, we're winning in court. It's the federal government who's appealing the outcome of those wins. So we've been winning in court. It's, it's the federal government who is, who's going back after, yeah, the, the decision that's made at that level. Would you agree with that?
Yes. Trustee Powell?
Just to sort of echo President Sylvester's comments about how, I know this is really hard to have this happen, the mental health programming that's been built up over the last few years with this grant has been just, I know, a source of pride for so many people in this district, and provided really necessary supports to students, and we know that those mental health issues aren't going away anytime soon. And I know that Mr. Liu already spoke a little bit about some of the work being done to find other funding sources for these programs, and I certainly, I just wanted to make sure we're, we're clear on the CYBHI. I know that that was really something that this district, I think, pursued fairly early on, like, one of the, one of the early districts to really jump in, to explore that as a, as a funding option. And it sounds like we're still sort of in the beginning stages, if you would, in understanding how, how much that will help us in terms of funding the services. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, that is fair to say. We are, Dr. Chamberlain is very competitive, which is great. So we do think that we've submitted the most bills at this point than any other school district, and Venture County, but have yet to receive any of those dollars back. But again, yes, our district is, we're trying to, we're trying to continue to better position ourselves to leverage the CYBHI initiative to, again, like, provide sustainability for these important services.
Trustee Goldberg?
So President Sylvester, you characterized it perfectly by saying we are heartbroken. I would add, second, I want to express my deep gratitude to the mental health department and practitioners for all the work that has gone into not just getting the funding, but doing the very important work that our kids need. And it's, my, my gratitude is coupled with sorrow and anger at the federal government for putting us in this position, and for fighting wins in court. So, thank you, and I'm, yeah.
I just wanted to, I should clarify that, you know, we have, as we bring forward these resolutions related to mental health, and then the subsequent ones, you know, we have a statutory requirement to provide the Board of Education and employees a notice as it relates to this. As I mentioned before, though, our mental health team, you know, we do have, again, one-time, but one-time dollars, which can only go so far, but we still do have a set of one-time dollars that we now can sustain, again, maybe not exactly how our current programming is right now, but to some degree of that. It's just with the uncertainty of the federal dollars, it was prudent to include this resolution. I think Dr. Chamberlain and her team are going to work to, to really outline what next year and maybe the next couple of years look like using those one-time dollars, and so it is possible that, you know, some of the positions listed here will have, will be funded, again, with different dollars.
And we, just to piggyback, one thing we do know about Dr. Chamberlain and her team is they are very good at finding and stretching dollars, and we are grateful for that.
Which includes finding additional grants, so I know that that work is going on all the time, so that is much appreciated. Any other comments and questions on this particular resolution? Okay. Seeing none. We are now on item 5H, resolution number 25-26 to 21. Do I have any public comments? Okay. We have five public comments, so each speaker will get three minutes. So again, Sam Muscarelli, Mark Hanlon, followed by Shane Lawner.
My name is Sam Muscarella again, and I am here to say that the reduction of these classified positions is, again, not a great idea. They're just super needed, as you can see. Take a look around, how many people came today. There are so many zoomed in right now, called in. I, it's hard to know that there's board members that can get salary increases and stuff like that, and we're classified employees fighting for our jobs. So let's make it make sense!
Good evening to the Board of Trustees, the Executive Cabinet, and everyone else. I am Mark Hanlon. I am employed here as a special education paraeducator at Sequoia Middle School. I would like to focus my comments on Agenda Item 5H on two positions: one of the six custodians and the supervisor of me and my fellow special education paraeducators. CYSAA has been told that one of the six custodian positions is to be cut, is coming from this, my site of Sequoia Middle School. Myself and several of my coworkers have noticed the difference since the vacancy has started. The floors went from guaranteed to be cleaned every night to only once a week. The tables also do not feel as clean. Unclean classroom spaces will undoubtedly affect the health of both staffs and students. Sick staff will affect efficiency as subs are used or further work is not done, and student illnesses will take them away from the class and affect the district's cash flow in the way of reduced ADA funds. The supervisor special education paraeducators position is one that comes and goes in this district. I got hired during a time that it did not exist. I remember the position that is now the student support technician, telling me the confusing thing, they were not my supervisor, but they would often be forwarding information from them, and there was more than one. Three important things that the incumbent does are increase the amount of training I receive, decrease the amount of backlogs in the vacancies of the para-professional positions, including doing the interviews, and increase the efficiencies of transfer between pairs and, of increase the efficiency of pairs, transferring pairs between sites. I do not feel that this position is mandatory, but it should be replaced by a second student support tech, even if part-time, or creating a lead pair to help with coordination of both training and site transfers. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Some of you here tonight know me, and some of you don't. My name is Shane Lawner, and I've been a classified employee for CVSD for the last 12 years. I first started out as a custodian at Kalina Middle School, and for the past six years, I've been working as a warehouse tech at the district warehouse. As a warehouse tech, some of my job duties are inter-district mail pickup and delivery, inter-district pickup and delivery of fiscal money and checks to be delivered, to be delivered to the fiscal office, stamping all mail for delivery to the postal service, supply deliveries such as custodial and copy paper to school sites, filling supply orders for school sites, district move requests such as furniture, special education equipment, and teacher site moves. We also deliver textbooks, educational items from the CVSD print shop, measure eye orders, and child nutrition purchases. These are, these jobs are currently done by two warehouse technicians. It was brought to my attention on Friday, January 30th, by Union First President Anzio Rubino, who's here tonight, that the district wants to abolish one of those warehouse technician jobs. The district is, the district is also abolishing the warehouse specialist job, which involves shipping and receiving, cutting the warehouse down to just two workers. Myself and the lead warehouse worker will be the only two left in the warehouse. This will severely affect the way business is currently being done in the warehouse, especially if one of us is sick, takes a vacation, or gets injured. Who will be able to do the job? School sites and the district offices will have to wait longer for what is done by the warehouse technician. Customer service will be negatively impacted, as well as one warehouse technician will not be able to support all the schools, plus the district's offices, in one eight-hour shift. But the biggest impact will be on the students who rely on what we do. How can children learn when textbooks and educational materials are delayed? I ask the board to please think about this and to not approve the abolishment of the warehouse technician job, and to find another way for the district to save money. I also ask the board to do their due diligence, and go to the school sites, and talk to the employees on how district classified jobs that are going to be cut will affect them in the schools. Thank you for your time.
Okay, our last two speakers on this agenda item are Sue Blake and Sue Ellen Pantages.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Sue Blake. I'm the Administrative Assistant for Maintenance and Operations. I've been in that position for the past six years. I've worked for Canale Valley Unified School District as a classified employee for the last 25 years. I understand that we need cost-cutting measures. Have you considered closing low enrollment schools? Not popular, but fiscally responsible. How about staff furlough days? Again, not popular, but if it saves classified jobs, I'd be willing to take them. I want to speak about the elimination of vacant positions, just because they are vacant... about the elimination of vacant positions. Just because they are vacant doesn't mean they are not needed. Ground staff are to the bare bones now. I myself was asked to provide my job duties to Dr. Hayek. The reason stated was that the retiring planning technician's duties needed to be shared out. How much more can we take? Another position cut that is on tonight's consent agenda is the director of maintenance and operations. An email was sent to the entire department without communicating with the director first, stating the director of the maintenance and operations position would be eliminated as of July 1st. I'm a little confused about how this could be communicated to staff in our entire department by Dr. McLaughlin before the board approved it. Isn't that on tonight's consent agenda? I'm not sure how that works, but I haven't paid too much attention to that. This title and position change is not needed. The remaining two planning positions could easily be wrapped into maintenance and operations and keep the department as-is. We run just fine. We've done it for a long time. We know what we're doing. I urge the board to take a closer look at these cuts and think about the best interest of the students, staff, and the district as a whole before you vote tonight on these consent to the cuts. I also wonder about the Canale way. I know, nobody likes to go to the past, and 25 years ago was a long time ago, but I have always been proud to work for Canale Valley Unified School District. When I meet people on the street and they say, "Where do you work?" "Canale Valley Unified." Now I mumble it. Please, please do your due diligence before just rubber stamping any cuts. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sue Ellen Pantages. I am a preschool teacher, a lead teacher in a state preschool with the CVSD preschool. I have been there for almost 13 years, and I love what I do. When I went to school, the first thing they said, "If you're going to be a preschool teacher, don't expect to get rich." But being a preschool teacher means if you're on your own, you're, we're living pretty much at poverty level, you know? We don't earn a lot of money. It's too bad, because we love what we do. We really do. I've got a whole bunch of people here that work with me, and we all have that passion. One of the things that we find is that a lot of people don't understand what a preschool teacher is required to do. As a lead teacher, I had to get a bachelor's degree. I have a bachelor's degree from Channel Islands in early childhood education. I also have three other degrees from Moore Park College, one of them also in early childhood education. I am making about, mm, a little bit more than what Starbucks does right now. I am making less than the assistant teacher that just left our program to go work as a para at another school district and is making $6 more an hour than I am. And I have way more education than her. The other thing is the requirements. They provide us a staff manual. We have, come out of there, the DRDP measures. Right now, we have TK teachers that are learning how to do this, that have a credential. We are credentialed technically, but we are still considered a classified employee. I have to renew this permit every five years by doing 105 hours of professional development every year. It is required of us. It is not something we can just go, "Nope, not interested." Right now, this is what we are learning in this manual, the teaching pyramid. I don't know how many K-12 teachers are aware of what this is, but this is something that is taught to us to help the children with social, emotional problems and issues that we are trying to guide them through before they get to the K-12 system. And we start off with the bottom and work our way up to the top. The more needs these children have, the more help we can give them by using this. Our lesson planning, which is this book here, means that we have to correlate our lesson plans to the DRDP measures, which are in here, and to the pre-TK foundations and frameworks, which are the ones we're required to do by the state. So, this whole book here is how we connect all of that information, and that goes into our lesson plan. So, our lesson plan isn't just writing down, we're coloring today, we're reading this book today. I have to include all of that information for each measure for the DRDPs. Okay. Thank you very much.
Before I turn it over to Mrs. Ashmore to see if she has comments, I'm going to reiterate, we are not voting on any of this tonight. These are purely information and discussion items, so nothing is being voted on. Mrs. Ashmore, do you have any comments on this resolution?
So, I think we've been talking about, at most of these meetings for two, if not three years, the state of the budget and declining enrollment, rising costs affecting our ability to project out a balanced budget. And currently, our costs are exceeding our revenues. So, as a part of a multi-year strategic plan, the district brought forward two resolutions. Last year, we were fortunate at the time that we were able to do those reductions by way of attrition and vacant positions. At some point, though, we recognize that reductions strictly through vacancies and attrition does not lead us to a balanced budget, and we have to look a little deeper and a little further. That is where we are now. The classified resolution you will see has a number of positions identified as vacant, but there are a few that are not. Again, reason, reason provided. The process, I think I responded to on the previous agenda item, we would look to, for any member affected, we would look to collective bargaining agreement, personnel commission rules, and education code regarding displacement rights and required timelines, which is why we're here now, and all the applicable, you know, policies, which include seniority, potentially if there were a true layoff, the 39-month list, which is reemployment rights. So, that's in a nutshell. And I would just offer, when you look at last year's and this year's, we really did begin with management and district office-level positions first. So, we look to both district educational center, district operational center, and management, and we continue to look there first as difficult decisions are contemplated.
Just jumping really quick, you know, it sucks to have to go through any type of discussion on elimination of positions. We know that there's vacant positions on here that we would all like to have filled, so they can support our classrooms, our schools, our students. It's never easy to have to go through reduction force. This is my 14th, 13th year in the district. We've avoided it, for the most part, on the classified side the whole time I've been here. Eventually, we're going to get caught up trying to get to a balanced budget. That's where we're at, hence why most of the reductions we've looked at last year and the other resolution that follows this is heavy administration, teachers on assignments, and vacant positions. It's hard to see that they're vacant positions. It's better to be vacant than if they were filled, because eventually, for us to get to a balanced budget, there are probably going to be positions on there that are people tied to those positions, sitting on those positions now. So, for us, trying to look at what's vacant and make a decision on somebody not losing their job versus a position that's open, that's what our goal has been all along in moving through this. I'm going to say next year is what our thoughts could be, our last year of us having to make cuts. The sad thing is, is those are going to be people in positions. And so, hence why we're looking at vacant positions now, knowing that we have a third, a three-year plan of trying to get back to a balanced budget. And some will say, "Well, what happened? Why, why do you not have a balanced budget?" We received so many one-time dollars, COVID dollars, and stimulus dollars, that I could not go and cut positions and right-size the district when all this money was sitting in our fund balance. It wasn't right to do. All those dollars are gone, and now we have a deficit, and we've got to figure out how to get rid of that deficit. You can look through some programs, but ultimately, personnel costs are where the dollars come from at the, at the rate that we need. And so, we are continually, we are going to continue to look through this process with, work with our board, work with our bargaining groups, to work through the reductions that we need to make.
I want to take this up a little bit more of a level and really just, it's really to give some more context to this, to the community. Ms. Ashmore touched on a lot of it, but I do want to talk about the pressures that we face and our responsibility as a board to have a balanced budget. In December, we were presented with first-generum financials the previous spring. We were presented with a three-year budget, and we are running, or would be running, a fairly large structural deficit. And we have to make decisions based on what we look at as the demographics that we're facing, as well as what we think the state, how they will fund us, and that leads to how we staff our district. As you all know, we are funded on attendance, which is closely aligned to enrollment. The district has done an excellent job in really reducing chronic absenteeism, and that is something that, to some extent, has been under control, and I applaud all of the staff and educators who have worked hard on that. But enrollment is really, is really what is driving a lot of what we're seeing. We're no different than most or many districts across the state, especially here in Thousand Oaks. There's been basically zero population growth. You get the census over the past 10 years. Our community is aging. The average age has gone up. People want to stay here. They're aging in place. This is leading to pretty high housing costs. The median home price is somewhere north of $1.3 million. That really makes it prohibitive for young families with children to move in here. Couple that with a statewide drop in birth rates. People are just not having as many kids or having kids at all as they did. So, what that means is there are just fewer school-aged children over time. And as our funding drops, the cost associated with each one of those students does not go away commensurately. And again, as all of you have pointed out, the cost of living has gone up, and the cost of operating the school district has gone up. And while the state does, does give us some cost-of-living adjustment, that number is offset by the fact that we have less students. Dr. McGlaughlin talked about the one-time COVID funds. That really helped us out for a number of years. We use those funds responsibly. There are districts who use those funds to pay ongoing expenses, and now, and now they are really in even more difficult position than we are. We've done a good job, I believe, in recognizing these trends, both in declining enrollment as well as these one-time funds early, and we've been pretty prudent. And again, as was mentioned, we did make some staffing reductions last year, pretty much limited to district office. If you look over here, we had one more assistant superintendent sitting up there than we do this, we have one less this year, so we had one more last year. So, again, we tried to do what we can to minimize disruptions to the students. That really is the primary goal of what we're doing. I recognize that everybody working for this district impacts our students in some way. So, and again, as Dr. McGlaughlin explained, utilizing vacant positions does soften the blow a bit. And I understand that sometimes can lead to more work for people. So, that's just to give some context here. Do I have any questions or comments from my fellow trustees? Trustee Kearns.
I would just like to quickly remind the community that as student board member, I have no involvement in human resources decisions, nor should I, I do not have the requisite experience, and I default to the judgment of my fellow board members and our superintendent.
Can I be a student?
Gosh, I was thinking the same thing. Dr. McGlaughlin.
You know, I will point out, Mark Hanlon, is that your, Hamlon, right? Correct. You made a great suggestion, and it's something that we will take back and take a look at on how to make sure that our paraeducators have the, another touch point, it's not an administrative position, that we were, we'd be able to cut a position and create a bargaining unit member position. So, I do appreciate you sharing that today. It definitely was an aha when you said it, and something that we will go back and look at and make sure that, hopefully, we can make it happen. So, I do appreciate it. So, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Trustee Gil.
I just want to express appreciation to all of you who came tonight, and I, one of the speakers noted that many folks are watching on Zoom, and I think, I'm glad you're here. I think the best way to go through really difficult, challenging circumstances is together. And I hope, I hope that you come away understanding that none of this is easy. Right-sizing a district is not a comfortable process. I will say, as others have already remarked, the board and district leadership saw this coming and have tried to make these decisions as gradually as possible and to minimize and mitigate the impact as much as we're able. But as has been acknowledged, the trend is not changing, and the funds that we have are increasingly limited. The choices, the choices have to be made. It's not an easy process. So, again, and I, I know it impacts you personally. I hear you.
Can I, can I just caution people?
I hear you.
Please not to interrupt.
We do, we do hear you. Again, I appreciate you being here. We are listening very carefully. And again, I appreciate that we are going through this circumstance together. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right. We are moving on to 5A, discussion of resolution number 25/26/20. Are there any speaker cards? Okay, there are no speaker cards. Mrs. Ashmore, is there anything you would like to add?
No, nothing in particular. We started the certificated resolutions last year as well, looked first at district-level positions, management positions, and I think it was mentioned by a board member, positions that are currently removed from direct support to students. So, yeah.
Thank you. Any, Doc?
I will note, all of the administrative positions on this had people sitting in their seats last year. This year, they're vacant. We were able to move administration, administrators around to decrease deans at our middle schools, decrease assistant principals at two of our high schools, bring down a principal at century to an assistant principal position, which is, will be on this reduction for elimination this year. So, most of these positions, like I said, were filled last year. This year, we've, we've gone a year with them being vacant. So, just know, we've been thinking ahead as positions opened up and what positions would we eliminate, and do we have the right fit to move individuals into those positions? And at this point, it seems like it's worked all right.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this resolution? Okay. Thank you all. These are difficult. I mean, as has been pointed out by a lot of us, these are difficult conversations. There are school districts out there in our county who are laying off wholesale counselors, nurses, librarians, teachers. So, to the extent on our certificated side, we can keep it to admin. We've really made a concerted effort to do that.
I will point out, we, we're, because we do have some UACT representatives in here, we've dropped 40 UACT positions over the course of the last two years. They do not necessarily see our reduction force, because enrollment dictates them being backfilled. So, if the students are not here, if we're losing 200, 300 students a year with a high graduation rate going out and a small TK or kindergarten class coming in, we have done that through attrition as well, through reduction and for, or not reduction force, through retirements and resignations to not backfill 40 positions. So, if some may are wondering, why are there no teaching positions on there? Those are all based on enrollment, or being filled through. or being filled through enrollment numbers and how, what positions we need with the enrollment of students in our, in our schools.
Thank you. All right. If there are no further comments on this, we're going to move to item 5J, which is Board Committee Reports. So what board members want to give a report? Trustee Gorbak?
I'm giving the Wellness Committee Report. You may have heard that Mrs. Chamberlain, Dr. Chamberlain is doing a fantastic, okay, doing a fantastic job as far as seeking grants, as far as just keeping and acquiring grants, billing insurance, which is a new thing that we're allowed to do now. And with that, there is an increased use of services. Our students are using it. I'm going to say now, I'm going to say later on when I talk about Counselor Week, unless our students have a full-fledged mental health situation, they can't learn the academics. And Dr. Chamberlain and her team is making sure that our students have access to that. Now, we have people and personnel there that I'm hoping will be able to be retained, but I, with the federal government, never mind. So I just wanted to say, report on the Wellness Committee, acquiring insurance, billing insurance and seeking grants. And I thank Dr. Chamberlain and congratulate her and her team. That's all.
Any other committee reports? All right, I got one. All right. So I attended my first meeting for the Caneo Coalition for Youth and Families. This is a very unique committee. It is a joint committee that encompasses one representative from CVUSD, one from the city of Thousand Oaks, as well as someone from the Caneo Wrexon Park District. So I was joined at this meeting by councilperson Ty Gutierrez and Director Ashley Orozco, along with a liaison from each one of those agencies. So basically, we had a recap of all of the previous discussions over the past year and any open-ended items. This included whether we wanted to create one logo for the group, what the meeting format should do, and whether we wanted to update the agreement. Last time it was done was 2018, and whether we wanted to add more voices to the committee. So we came, we did come up with some answers to those questions. Our upcoming meeting formats, instead of being limited to one nonprofit speaker per meeting, we're going to find or try to find three related nonprofits at each meeting to come speak. They'd have a little less time, but hopefully they would also gain some synergy from, from listening to each other and seeing and sharing resources or ideas. The three issues we agreed we want to focus on over the upcoming year included immigration help and resources, mental health supports, especially important considering some of the discussions tonight, and housing. So there were two announcements, which might be of interest to anyone listening. One, Robin Britt from Community Conscious. This is an organization that owns a building that provides space in their building free to nonprofits. She let us know there's available space in the building, and they're currently accepting applications. And two, the city of Thousand Oaks has added a bus route to their transit and altered some of their routes, making it much simpler for our middle and high school students to get from their school sites at the end of the day to the teen center. So if that's something that potentially might interest you or your child, the city's website, you can get more information, is totransit.org. So thank you. Any other committee reports? All right, seeing none. Next, we're on comments from the Board of Education. We will start. Trustee Kearns?
Good evening, everyone. Last Monday, on January 26th, we had a Student District Advisory Committee in this very room. The majority of the meeting, I think the agenda item actually ran over about an hour. We had an AI discussion with, led by Dr. Suter and Mrs. Garcia, and we discussed in small groups, but every single group discussed all of these topics: current use of AI, what students think is an appropriate use of AI, and the contrast between the two, which is, as you can imagine, quite significant; communication expectations from teachers to students, vice versa; concerns about AI, general concerns, what students feel like should not be happening with AI; how to enhance learning using AI instead of like replacing learning or replacing thinking; how to actually use it as a tool to build upon a student's learning; and policy priorities for potential policy. I know that's being discussed in the Technology Committee, awaiting soon to be at the board. I will save the details of everything that we discussed. I have over a page of notes of everything our students discussed for when we have our larger AI discussion instead of using the next 10 minutes to talk about them. And then I also, oh, before I forget, humongous thank you to Dr. Suter and Mrs. Garcia for doing an incredible job of running that agenda item. I think it really was one of the best agenda items we've had on SSTAC, at least since I've been there. It was an incredible discussion, and their guidance proved invaluable. So thank you. Then I attended yesterday with Trustee Goldberg, the Bite of Reality Financial Simulation by Logix, which was hosted at CLU. It was very interesting to learn. I didn't plan on participating, but once I was there, I was there with our ethos program at TO. I literally like followed the bus in my car. It was quite funny, actually. But I was there with our ethos program at TO. They got me pretty hyped up about it. And I did download the app, and I did the little simulation. It was quite fun. We'd walk around each situation. I have a little spreadsheet that they gave me of my performance. So I ended with $0. My monthly amount that I had to spend was $4,719, both me and my spouse's income. Spent, there's like 40 line items here. It was pretty much, we spent the entire day just going around, spending money on different things. And at the end, I found myself with like negative $700. So I had to go back and unspend on things and respend on cheaper things. So, you know, I think there's an obvious parallel to be made here to other things occurring today, but I will not be the one to make it. Yeah, so it was a really fun event. Thank you, Trustee Goldberg, for joining me. If anyone wants to go deeper into my fake financials, please let me know following the meeting. I think that's all I have for tonight. Good night, Caneo Valley.
Hopefully, there was a lesson in there. Trustee Kearns? Or not. All right, Trustee Powell?
I'm so glad you gave that rundown of the event. I was going to ask you how that was. So I wasn't able to go this year, but I went, gone the last two years, and it really is, I think, an amazing learning experience for our students, for sure. Happy to be here tonight. I will just share a couple of things. I was, I served as a judge for the recent Youth of the Year event for the Boys and Girls Club of the Greater Caneo Valley. And of the five students that they, that were competing for this honor, four of them were CVUSD students, which is pretty awesome. Three Westlake High School students, one Agoura, one TO High School, and the winner that was announced today was from Westlake High School. So congratulations to her. But more importantly for me was, it gave me an opportunity to do a deeper dive into understanding what are, what the Boys and Girls Clubs are doing at our middle school campuses, the sort of the breadth of their impact for students, and really getting a bird's eye view into some individual students' experiences of how their time spent at that Boys and Girls Club and their activities, either after school, before school, summer, lunch, really deeply impacted them, not just academically, but their personal growth, values, leadership, all sorts of things. And so, and it's not just from middle school. It's, there's also high school programs. And so these kids are all high school students that go back and volunteer for the club. So I really encourage people who don't know about the Boys and Girls Club to check it out. I think they're really a great partner with our schools, and I just really appreciate that partnership. And then finally, I did just want to comment on today and sort of the difficult topics of tonight's agenda. And I also really appreciate all the people who came today. I think it's really important for us to, to get to hear people's experiences because, you know, when we're looking at these resolutions and these lists of positions, we need to remember that there's always a, these aren't just job positions, these are humans. Each one of these lines is a human, or multiple humans. You know, a human that hopefully likes their job, maybe loves their job, has maybe has been here for a long time. And so it is really, really difficult to be in this chair, having to think about making these decisions. And yet, we've known for a few years now that this was coming. And I really want to commend Dr. Hayek for educating us constantly along the way, the last two or three years, about the fiscal cliff that was coming. And I still remember the first budget presentation that he gave, where he ended it with just the black screen. And we all sort of giggled at first because it was like, okay, you know, rolling our eyes here. He's really, you know, showing us what's to come. But he really wanted us to be aware ahead of time that once the one-time dollars that were coming out of the pandemic, those grants that needed to be spent, had to be spent, once that was gone, we were going to be really facing some, some heavy decisions. And I thought that President Sylvester really laid out some of the other conditions that we're facing, that public education's facing, certainly everywhere in California, where districts are being, are having to make these really hard choices. And so I just wanted to sort of comment on that and remember that these are, these are all valued positions. And again, I thank you for folks who took the time to come out and, and share their stories and their concerns and their frustration. And that is it for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gill?
Thank you. Good evening. Of all the things that have occurred over the last two or three weeks since we were last together, I think I want to just welcome everyone to February and Black History Month. And many of us have already read James, the newest addition to our Core Lit program. But if you haven't, if you were waiting for us to finally approve this title, it happened a few minutes ago. And if you're waiting for that, you can start reading now. It's an excellent read. Thank you.
Trustee Goldberg?
I agree with that. The book is amazing. I want to thank all the speakers and all the people who came. It wasn't lost on me that there were more non-speakers than people who stood up at the podium. And Trustee Powell is completely correct. Every title is a person, and we don't forget that. My children would say I got activated in '07, '08 with all the drastic draconian cuts. They're probably not wrong. So this is, I enjoyed sitting in the back of the room much more than I do up here. But it's important, and I know that I trust the team knows that each of these, each of these things on a list are not just things on a list. These are people who impact our students. And I applaud the strategy of reductions based on retirements and vacancies, first and foremost, and keeping cuts as far away from the kiddos as possible. I truly appreciate those of you speakers who came and offered suggestions because we do listen, as Dr. McGlocklin said, we do think and we do adjust. So I expect that to happen. I want to say thank you to Len Smolberg, the president of the Boys and Girls Club, for today's event. It reminded me of the wonderful partnerships that we have in this community. And that's what, to Trustee Gill's point earlier, we are much better when we are doing things together. And finally, I'm just going to say, Trustee Kearns did not do his performance yesterday any justice by minimizing the experience of going around and getting transportation and getting housing. You're given, you're given a role, a job, like a job, a spouse, you're given your income for the month, your spouse's income for the month, and you have to go to each station and budget. And I will say, for those watching, please do not take financial advice from Trustee Kearns. But, but I will say it was the, I've been to this event before. This was the most fun I've had. The mom in me was very anxious, but he did a very good job. And in the end, he balanced his budget. His priorities may not have been the same as mine, but he did a very good job. So without, what did you say? Without making, availing himself of predatory loans.
I was a hairstylist, for those curious, and I had a $1,700 lease payment on a car. So.
To his, in his defense, he paid himself first. So for those of you worried, he definitely put money away. So I'll give him that.
To a degree.
It was great.
Thank you. Trustee Gorbak?
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank all the speakers that spoke tonight. We do hear you. We do listen. And we do know that each one of you, each one of you and the people you represent are people, not just items on a list. And we try to look at positions the best we can and try to, try not to hurt individual people or, or again, the effect that it has on our kids. That's the bottom line, the effect on the kids. I want to welcome everybody to School Counselor Week. This is a week of biased interest to me as a former school counselor. And I just think our school, as I stressed many times when I was working, mental health is the foundation for academic health. And if our kids don't have anybody to go to, to get that mental health and the mental wellness, which I'll talk about in a second, which I guess I already talked about, their academic, their academic success is going to be questionable. It's not going to be as much as possible. So give thanks to your school counselors wherever you are and just show, show your appreciation for them. I went to CVHS Student Recognition. That's Caneo Valley High School, right here, the continuation school. You know, when I, when we talk to employers, the first thing they always say is, it's not as much what you know as how you know to apply it. In other words, the soft skills. The presenters, or the students here are honored for things like responsibility, kindness, integrity, which, respect, the soft skills that make someone success. And I just appreciate that so much in the relationship, that the fact that the teachers recognize those skills as well as the academic work and performance. Another accomplishment of our district that I went to that I think is fantastic was the Joint Jazz Band Concert. That was a concert with our three major high school jazz bands, as well as two neighborhood bands, Oak Park and Camarillo. And we brought in, they, I shouldn't say we, they brought in national-recognized players to tutor the students as well. One was a Juilliard school teacher. The other was a performer in Boston, I believe, excuse me, Maine, to work with our students. And the experience that I understand our students got and the performance, the joy that I got listening to great jazz was fantastic. I went, one of the events I went to that was not within the school district was the Ventura County Board of Education Presentation on Trafficking and School Safety. We, I admit myself, I took for granted that Thousand Oaks, I mean, what could be wrong with, you know, how could, that's not true. We have to be aware that trafficking takes place here in Thousand Oaks as well as the rest of the county. We have to know what to look for. We have to know the signs. It's a tragedy. You know, sadly enough, I think the national news every day is bringing more attention to it. But it's tragedy that we can't take for granted that it doesn't happen here. So it was a very interesting presentation by our law enforcement, by different groups that are employed to assist victims of trafficking. But we can't take for granted it doesn't happen. And finally, this morning, I went to an event that was just, it was like old-time school. It was rock and roll. It was rock and roll, walk and roll to Acacia Elementary. We met at the park. There must have been, what would you say, 80 parents? Parents and kids, but it was a group, I mean, I felt like I was living in the 1950s, which I almost was. You know, families walking to school together, pushing younger siblings on their, in their carts, the older siblings walking around, kids, one little girl came to, got to school after the walk to the park and yelled, "Freedom!" It was just so cute and so neighborhood-generating community. It was fantastic. So with those, with those things, I wish you all a good evening. And again, I want to stress to those who were watching on Zoom and may still be listening, and for those that spoke, we hear you, and we understand the difficulty of what we're, what we're doing. Thank you.
Yeah, I will, I will be very brief. I just want to say, in addition to my board trustees thanking everyone who came, I would also like to acknowledge I did receive, and I believe they did too, several emails, which also were read and digested. So I appreciate, however you reach out to us, that you continue to reach out. The only comment I'll make is the Student of the Month, not, I'm sorry, the Boys and Girls Club students, they were five speakers, as trustee Powell listed, unbelievable speakers. These were freshmen or sophomores in high school, and they were so composed and so eloquent. It was really amazing. Future looks good when you hear something along those lines. With that, I will turn it off. Over to Dr. McLaughlin.
All right, well, thank you. Just really brief, I think, as you look at the folks that were in the room tonight and speakers, you know, as someone who has to go back and consider comments that were made and thoughts and processes that will keep me up at night till our next board meeting, I think there are two positions that I'll probably talk to Cabinet about. One is a warehouse technician position, and then the other is the paraeducator classroom assistant position. I think those are two positions we've got to look at, even though that one is vacant. I'm not going to guarantee that they won't be back on here or not, but I do think that those two positions, not that they're not all worth looking at, but the warehouse position is not a vacant position, and that didn't, doesn't go unnoticed with me. And ultimately, I don't think we're necessarily going to, every position counts, but balance our budget on a .66 paraeducator in the classroom. So those will be two positions that I'll talk with Cabinet about as we move forward. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're now at item six, this is adjournment 6A, future board topics. Are there any topics board members would like to see added to the agenda, future agendas? Okay, great, thank you. Seeing that we have not added any agenda items, the meeting is adjourned at 8:13 PM. Thank you and good evening.